Okay, so this is our tryout window policy town hall presentation. So we are going to start off with the club and administration portion of the presentation and then we'll roll into the parent and player questions. By any means, if you feel like you want to stay on and listen to it all, you're more than welcome to. However, that's just how the presentation is going to flow. And we also have some membership and insurance questions tagged on to this presentation as well. And that will be a part of the parent, sorry, the club and coach administration section of this presentation. So quick introduction, my name is Carrie Campbell. I'm the manager of indoor competitions. We have the whole youth competition team here. So we have Alicia Lytham, which is our volleyball operations director, Mark Wears My Youth Competition Lead, and a brand new face for our YC team is Jacob Barker, who is taking over for Caitlin R Scott. So Jacob will be managing our ECI and 15 new age divisions. So that's, yeah, we're welcoming Jacob. We're in his first town hall here. We also have Jennifer Harpness, who is our financial director for the OVA, and she'll be going through the administration and, or sorry, the insurance and a portion of the presentation. Okay, so without further ado, we're gonna just, the try window was posted a week ago, so we're just going to review it and make sure everybody understands and answer any questions and things along that line. So here we go. So again, our agenda, we're going to have coaches and administrators. We're going to just touch on the changes for the 2022-2023 window, the important dates you need to know. I'm going to point out where you can find all this information. We're going to be answering some questions in regards to the the tryout window, and then I'm going to hand it off to Jennifer, who's going to go off through MRS and insurance for our coaches and club administrators. And first, I just wanted to say a thank you. These last couple of COVID seasons have been hard on everybody and, you know, we have to say thank you to our clubs, our coaches, everybody involved in clubs across Ontario for trying to keep our sport alive. And, you know, we are very much looking forward to a traditional start to the OVA season this coming September, but we need to say thank you to everybody for their continued patience and understanding and and fingers crossed, we don't have to worry about any, we'll have minimum changes or concerns come September. And, you know, it'll be just like good old 2018 again. So thank you to everybody. So a couple of changes to the policy. So we have pushed the resigning period to July. And that will, that is different than what it was in the past season. It was right after Nationals finished last year. We just wanted to allow a break for clubs and athletes to catch their breath and kind of get sorted. It is open to all athletes who played for your club in 21-22 season. This is also going to be, also include athletes that have been a part of any type of house league or grassroots program with your club. So they can be signed to our 4v4, 6v6 rally ball divisions or wherever they they fit within that ECI. They're more than welcome to to early sign and commit to the club for the competition season come September. And it should be noted that these athletes do have to be registered with your club. It's, you have to, there is a, you can't just say they they play for my club. You know, they have to be actually registered with it. It's okay if they transferred from one club to another. But they do have to be the last club that they registered with was your club. And last year, resigning offers were valid for 72 hours. This year it is 48 hour resigning offers. That's the expiry date on them. And that'll be dated from whenever the email is sent from your email to the kid, to the athlete, whatever date is there, it's 48 hours from that point on. We have moved back to a more traditional start to the trial period. We have a September 10th start to the window. All court tryouts have to move back to September from August. And again, August was a bit of an anomaly last year, considering we tried to make it possible for all teams to find gym space. And, you know, we really had to make that window of opportunity a lot bigger than what it traditionally is. So this year, we're back to that traditional start early September. And so that's when we're going to kind of get the ball rolling on that. We have offered, kind of lumped all of our ECI age division offer dates on the same day. So whether you're playing on for, offering for a 4v4 or 6v6 EC, traditional on specialized or TLS, which is a date coming soon, you'll be able to offer any of those athletes on September 23rd. It allows us to shorten the staggered offer period. And it also kind of goes with our our whole concept of, you know, a little bit of fluidity with those age divisions and kind of sticking with that theme. So with the last offers going out on the 23rd, that should give everybody about six weeks to prepare for our November 5th competition start date. So again, fingers crossed, hopefully a traditional season and November 5th is traditionally when we have started. You know, pre-COVID. So those are our major changes to the policy that that would be like to highlight. So here are our important dates. So like we had mentioned before, July 1st to July 31st is early resigning period for all your athletes that were registered with your club previously. We are going to stick with the summer offer period. That's August 5th to the 7th. Now, the summer offer period is open for kids that have been training with your club, who weren't traditionally playing with your club in the previous season. So you are allowed to offer them pre-trial. These athletes must have had more than one training opportunity with your club, and they cannot have participated in a session, just one session, on between August 5th and August 7th. So these are kids that are actually have reached out and shown interest and and are willing to train and want to be a part of the program. And it's important to note as well that we would not, we do not want these offers to be unsolicited. So you may have a number of kids training from your, training with your club from different clubs from the 2021-22 season. But those athletes have to come to you and commit to you before you can send them an offer. So it would be Alicia going to the Spikers and saying, thanks Spikers for training me this summer. I'd love to commit to you. It would be great if you can send me an offer. And only when you receive that email are you okay to send her an offer. So that is the summer offer period. And we are going to ask everybody to make sure they're sending their resigned athletes list to the OVA office. They'll be posted on the website as they have been in previous years. And that will be done through Formstack. If you are signing your, sending these offers in, we're asking you to include everybody on those lists. So it is your early resigning kids, your summer offer kids, and any kids that were a part of your grassroots program. So anybody who've committed to your club pre-trial needs to be sent to the office on August, by August 10. And then on August 13th, we're going to open that Google listing again. And that's where your club can go on and list your teams and positions you're looking for, genders you're looking for, for open spots. So a little advertising opportunity. And then I, on the September 10th to, well, September 10th is when tryouts start. If you're wondering about the February 1st deadline, that's just our last day to add new athletes to your roster in MRS. So really, you could have anybody, you can add somebody in September to your roster, or November, December, all the way up until February 1st. And then we move into our actual when offers can be emailed out. So we're going to start on the 19th. So that gives us almost 10 days of trial time. And we're going to start with our 18u athletes and then trickle down one day out into 15u. And then we're, again, all the early contact initiative and TNS age groupings can all be sent at once on September 23rd. So all this information, it's a lot of information. We do have a very comprehensive page on our website for everybody. Anything that has to do with the tryout window, whether that's offer forms, important deadlines, your declaration links, even your resigned athletes listing will be found on that very first link there. So that's, it's actually under Clubs on our gray menu bar at the top, and then it drops down into Tryouts. And just so everybody knows, any of our offer forms will be posted a maximum of 24 hours before the deadline. So if you know that offers are going to be sent out that September 19th for your 18u, we will post it 24 hours before the 19th. We don't want to release it any sooner than it needs to be. So they'll, every offer form will be posted about a day before the actual period starts. A link to this presentation will be, is right there. So you can click there. It'll take you right to the tryout window, a posting of the story. And it'll, I'm pretty sure it will have a link to the town hall as well. So where all this presentation will be found, as well as presentation or recording and the slide deck here. So all that. And then our club declaration posting is this link here. So that's where you go on and you list all your clubs, teams, what positions they're looking for, how many spots you have available, what region you're in. So those are all the links that you'll probably want quick access to when you are working towards your trial time. So pretty easy, right? So honestly, the try window, not a lot of changes this year. We kind of just wanted to to keep things a little simple and move back to a more traditional window. So what's next for youth competitions is we're looking for our what's new. And our youth competition calendar will be released by January 15th. So that'll again, get the the ball rolling on all our planning. We will have a club administration town hall on July 25th. That is going to be kind of just like a kickoff seasonal town hall where we can go through a lot of the stuff that you need for the start of your season. So that'll be really good. And then we're looking for our release of our youth competition manual by August 1st. So those are some key dates that you can mark in your calendar that you're going to need for the start in September. And it looks like I'm going to pass the baton on here to Jen.
Thanks. And Carrie, I might get you to just, I'll just be off next on the presentation. Sorry, I have a bit of a cold. If I start coughing, Alicia, you're on. So the MRS this season, new registration will begin September 1st, same as every season. We'll be rolling over everything from the previous season. Obviously, all the memberships will be reset, et cetera, as of September 1st. You can go on and re-register for the 2022-2023 season. Not a lot of changes once again to last year, so I don't need to go into too many details about process. But once again, you need to sign up as a club contact, pay your club contact membership fee in order to reactivate your club for the year. Once you've become a club contact, you can go in and click on the returning club form. And that's where you set up all your new information for your club, and then you pay your club fee for the year. We will roll over all the club data from last year so that you won't have to enter all your executive and everything again. But please do make sure that you update that information if you have a lot of changes with coaches, et cetera. So that we have the most current information for the club. And this is a step where the club contact will sign all the waivers. Says including the COVID-19 acknowledgement form. Let's see. I don't know where we'll be with that in a couple of months, but this is where you'll sign all of the waivers and all of those important agreements on behalf of the club. Your club form, the returning club form must be submitted and paid for by Sunday, September. Bill's chat is blocking. Thank you. Sunday, September 22nd. Or your certificate of insurance may be revoked. You must be an active paid club in our registration system in order to be valid to be covered by insurance. So next. So for MRS administration, athletes will be required to register as members in the MRS in one of the following categories prior to participating in any on-court activities. Trial players, if you have a brand new player who is going to do a trial prior to September 1st, you can, they can register as a trial player, which is a free membership. Anyone who wants to try out after September 1st can register as a trial player. Or if they know they're going to be on the team or playing, there's a good chance they can just go ahead and register as their recreational player for the 4v4 or competitive player for the other age divisions. Once club practices start, you must be a full member in the division or in a membership role that is required by the division they're playing in. So by the time the first club practice, you must be registered as a competitive player for 6v6 rally ball up to 18u. And you must have a recreational player membership for 4v4 rally ball. And then once again, prior to any OVA competition, you have to have those those memberships as well to compete for the OVA if you have not done any club practices for some strange reason. Next. Please. And then after an athlete makes a team, you can upgrade their membership from a trial player to whatever they're required to have, whether it's a recreational player or a competitive player. Once again, prior to any on-court activities. If you are a club who likes to pay their athletes fees, you collect that as part of their their fee for the club, then you can ask all of your all of your club players to register as trial players. And then when you add them to the team, you can upgrade them to whatever membership they're required for their division. All the how-to guides are online. The link is here. And Sherry is usually will be open to all of your questions. And she gets a million emails at the beginning of the year, but she's pretty good at getting back. And you can always contact me too if you have any questions. Next. Coaches and club staff must register themselves as full coach roles prior to any on-court activities. That includes tryouts. It cannot be a volunteer, you know, for a try, you must be a fully registered coach to do any on-court activity. This is for insurance purposes. Plus, we need you to be compliant with Ron's law and to have signed the waivers and all those such things. If you want, if the club wants to pay for a coach, then the coach can go in, activate themselves as a volunteer membership, and then the club can go in and upgrade the coach to a full membership. But once again, please make sure that the full membership is registered for prior to any on-court activities. Next, please. Insurance. All insurance, certificate of insurance requests be sent to insurance@terrienvolleyball.org address. Certificates of insurance will be issued to the club for facilities as soon as possible. I know we have a challenge every year with our insurance company trying to make sure our insurance policy is winning in good time to start getting certificates out to our member clubs. We start the process very early and we're often told by the insurance company, you know, that the insurers are kind of the bosses and that they'll get to it when they get to it. And last year, I know the insurance companies had a huge backlog and we're figuring things out with COVID. And so it took forever to get our insurance certificates. I guarantee that we will start poking the insurance company early again this year. And we hope that they will give us the respect and you know, assistance that we need in getting our policy renewed in a timely fashion so that we can get insurance certificates to our member clubs as soon as possible.
We have a couple of questions coming through here. We have a few talking specifically for Carrie's part, but there's also a couple of Jen for your parts. Let's, we'll do those first since we just talked about that. If we have a player join summer training who did not play OVA last season, what membership level do they need for the training period?
So for the actual training itself, they will need to be a member. So I mean, a lot of clubs get their camp sanctioned so that they can have non-members participate in that training. But if you're doing indoor club training, they should be a member. I would say at least a recreational member. We wouldn't make you do a competitive membership if they're not competing in the season, but they would at least have to have some level of paid membership in order to be doing on-court activities with the club. But if it's just for tryouts, they can be a trial player prior to September 1st. And we will roll them over into next season. I hope that makes sense. But if you're not sure, you can just email me with the specific situation.
Thank you. And there was one other question, but it's been answered with the tryouts. And yes, you do need to be registered as a trial player. And yeah, so you gotta make sure you do that. And that is the two that we had for you, Jen. So we are good on that end. Carrie, a couple of questions for you. Do you know if all school boards will have gym permits available by September 10?
You're muted, Carrie. Sorry about that. That's a little rusty, I guess. So we do know that we did survey our regional council, and they let us know that they'll, the most regions should have access to permits at that time.
Next question, a clarification on early resign. This was actually messaged to me privately, but it's a good question. I think some other people may be wondering the same thing. So just to clarify around early resigning for house league kids. And they only be resigned or signed to an ECI age group, or could they be signed to a 15u age group, for example?
They can be signed wherever they they fit. Obviously, if your club is lucky enough to be running house league programs for older age kids, they can be signed to wherever you feel like they they would fit in developmentally, including anything outside of ECI.
Perfect. Next question. Do athletes who played with the club last year need to send an email to commit if they are trying out for the same club?
No. So if you, the only emails that have to be sent by the athletes are the new athletes that are training with the club over the summer months. So Alicia played for the Spikers last season. She now is training with the Bumpers. So the summer offer period rolls around. She needs to make sure that she's communicated to the club that she wants to commit to the club for the coming season. Only then can they send an offer. I forgot to mention earlier that the summer offers are only valid for 24 hours. That's simply because the intent should already have been expressed prior to the offer being sent. So Alicia shouldn't have to think about it. She should be, yeah, I'm going to play for the Bumpers now. I've trained with them all summer. This is what I want. So there's a reduction in the expiry time for the summer offer kids for that reason.
Perfect. One more question that just popped up. How will the OVA inform parents on how the tryout window works? Will there be publication, social media information? And how will the OVA ensure clubs follow the policies set out and/or make up their own policies to sign athletes? Previous year, OVA was abided this practice and no action was seen.
Oh, this is a a good question, although it's, it's very hard to answer sometimes. So we communicate the trial policy through town halls like this, postings on the website. We often send out little reminders that this is a deadline for this. We don't send out deadlines after offer periods because we don't know when the emails have been sent and can't track them and things like that. So general reminders are sent out through socials and our website and town halls. At the end, we will be sending out a survey like we did last year in regards to how you felt the trial window went. The trial window is a self-policing policy, and it is one that I have to admit, and I'm not, it's very hard to police simply because a lot of it is a he said, she said, and it's very hard to move forward with any type of sanction or disciplinary action if I only have a phone conversation with somebody about something. And then when you try to follow up, something isn't, the same message isn't communicated, or it was misunderstood. So it turns into a bit of a like I mentioned, a he said, she said situation. Now, however, we have had times where players have been forwarded offers prior to the deadline, and the athletes have contacted us and said, hey, this coach sent me this. So we were able to follow up with discipline and sanctions. But unfortunately, it's a bit tricky for us to do that. This policy is out here to try and clean up this kind of messy situation. Like, we do know that tryouts are very stressful for everybody, and they are very hard for everybody. And we can only hope that everybody's putting their best foot forward and trying to do the best thing for the athletes and everybody involved in just kind of being as sportsmanlike as possible.
Well said, Carrie. Next question. If your house league is run through a licensing agreement but not directly by your club, are these players permitted to use the early sign offer for club players?
Licensing agreement. I'm not too sure I'm familiar with that term. I don't know if Alicia, you have any input. I would, my first instinct is to say no. I'm, I'm not really sure how a licensing agreement would work with a club. I know how it sort of works with our grassroots program, how you purchase our, our stuff, spikes or smash ball or something like that. And then you run that program on behalf of your club. But Alicia, do you, how do you feel about that? Am I saying the right thing, Alicia, Jen, Mark?
I was gonna say, Anastasia, if you could email Carrie the details of that, we can follow up just once we have more information. And we'll put an FAQ together based on the questions we've been receiving this evening. That'll be online as well. So everyone will be able to access that answer once we have more info.
Next question. Are the majority of OVA clubs on board with early signings? It was initially only for the older age groups then due to COVID, but obviously now we're offering that for all age groups.
You know what? Every club is a bit different. We are finding that a large majority are using them. We feel that early signing is a great tool for clubs to get prepared for the trial season so they can kind of understand where their club stands, how many coaches they needed. You know, how many hours a week they can commit. And we do think it's a great planning tool, and it's a great way to show athletes loyalty. And, you know, there are a lot of kids that are super happy with their programs and their coaches and want to stay there. And it's a great way for them to, you know, walk into the September season and kind of taking the weight off their back. So it, there are clubs out there that choose not to use the resigning period for philosophy reasons, or, you know, they just don't have, they want kids to not worry about it. But we do feel it's a useful tool. You're not obligated to use it at all. But we do feel it's a good planning tool so everybody can kind of hit the ball or hit the ground running come September.
And Carrie, do you confirm? I know last season as well, yes, it was a COVID year, but it was over 50% of athletes were resigned going into September. So it's also going to be tracking those stats, you know, after this next fiscal year of 22 tryouts, just to see if that is still being utilized by the clubs.
Yeah, you know, this is a great. It's, yeah, just keeping things a bit similar to what it was in the past, I think, will help us move forward and see how successful these different aspects in in the trial window are, considering the last two seasons have been a bit of a a mess.
And that is all the questions I have on my end. Sorry if I missed anybody. I think we got all of them that have come through.
Okay. Um, that's great. Obviously, if anybody has any questions at all, feel free.
One more just popped up.
Perfect.
Any thought to just allowing a certain number of early offers per team, say perhaps six, then fill the remaining spots with typical, typical tryouts?
I think the it's a great question. I don't think we've thought about that. But my first thing that came to my head was it would be really hard for us to, we already know that this policy is a bit tricky. The more, you know, things that we put in, the harder it might be to police. Rosters are of different sizes and all that kind of stuff. But I don't know if that's something we'd be interested in. We just want to give clubs the opportunity to do that. But it's a great question. It's good food for thought, and then maybe something we can discuss for future years if we decide to keep the resigning.
Yep. No, and I think in terms of their early resigning, I think that's really, you know, based on the club philosophy and decisions on what they want to do in terms of, you know, trying to be more equitable and making everyone try it for their teams, or being able to secure teams ahead of time, months in advance of the fall, being able to get organized, knowing how many gyms they need, how many coaches and training sessions and all of that stuff. So I think, you know, being able to get organized, knowing how many gyms they need, how many coaches and training sessions and all of that stuff. So I think, you know, we kind of talked about it in the past. But in terms of it was more of a a club decision on what they wanted to do in terms of resigning or having tryouts come September. So, yeah, it's something to look after, look in the for in the future when discussing this policy as well.
Um, Mark, we're good?
Yep, that's uh, all on my end.
Awesome. So if anybody has any questions at all, feel free to email anyone of the Y C team and we'll be able to find that answer for you. So, yeah, thanks for spending, you know, some of your evening with us. We truly appreciate it. We are going to move on to the parent and parent and player one. Feel free to stick around if you're a club admin or or coach. We'd happy to have you. And so it might be a lot of the same information, but with a bit of a twist, but feel free to stick around. All right. So onwards. All right. Uh, so this is our parent and player presentation.
Thank you, Carrie. Um, I don't know how you want to address this, but the parent meeting was advertised to start at eight thirty.
Oh, right.
So this was the, I think, the quickest town hall session we've ever had for club administrators. So technically, we have about 24 minutes until we should technically be kicking off for parents.
Okay, so I'll wait. I guess grab a drink, uh, everybody and we'll reconvene in a little bit. Is that, or we're not going to shut it down and then open it up, right, Alicia?
No, we can, I'll just stop the recording and then we'll reconvene at eight thirty.
Yeah, everybody stretch your legs and grab a drink. Like Alicia mentioned, this meeting is being recorded. So just for everybody's information purposes, we, you should know that. We're going to ask everybody to please keep yourself on mute. If you have any questions, please throw them down in the chat at the bottom of your screen there. Mark is our youth competitions lead and he will be monitoring those questions as well. We're going to save questions till after the end of each section. So we're not, we can, some of your answer, your questions may be answered through the presentation. And however, if it is something that we feel needs to be brought up, we'll bring it up during our our little talk. We do, I think that's pretty much it for housekeeping. Um, we do have our whole youth competition delivery team here on the call tonight. We have our program volleyball operations director, Alicia Liddams. We have our youth competition lead, Mark Wiersma. Um, and brand new to our youth competition team is Jacob Barker. He is going to be looking after our ECI age divisions and our 15 U. So he's the guy you're going to be looking for. He's taking over for Caitlin. So we're very happy to have him. And myself, I've been around for a little bit longer than that. And I'm the indoor competitions manager. So without further ado, I'll share my screen and we can get started here. Okay, um, so welcome, everybody. This is our first time having a parent and player presentation for our tryout window. So I'm sure this is a trend that's going to keep up throughout the years. So happy to share the information. We do feel like this is an important meeting for all parties involved with indoor competitions. So this is what our presentation is going to look like today. So welcome. We're going to do a brief overview of the total policy. And then we're going to break it down into the different sections. So we're going to do a review of the resigning period, a review of the summer offer period and a review of the tryout session. So we will try to take any specific questions after each little review of the period. If not, we'll just hold them off at the end. Mark will see if there's anything that should be brought up then. If not, we'll just hang on to it to the end of the presentation. And then we can go through all their questions there. Should be noted that this presentation will be posted on our website under our town hall section. So you'll have access to all this information. You'll have the deck as well as the recording to reference if need be. And I would like to start off by saying thank you. These competition teams are, well, everybody's been up and down for the last couple of years with dealing with COVID and shutdowns and openings and policies and regulations. And we know it's been a very, very tough season, a tough few years. And we just want to thank everybody for their perseverance and sticking through it. And, you know, we really appreciate everybody's, you know, commitment to the sport. So thank you very much to everybody. All right, um, so let's dig in here. So why was a trial window policy created? So we actually introduced a trial policy back in the twenty four, twenty, uh, two thousand and fourteen, two thousand and fifteen season. It was formed through an ad hoc committee after a survey was sent out and 75% of our of the survey. People felt that it was needed. Um, we did do one year of, I need to. We did do one year of feedback and obtained, you know, different surveys and town halls to help draft the original policy. So it was a bit of a process to get to the the twenty four, twenty fifteen policy, but that's that's when it started. The overall need for the policy was to help further define the indoor season. We wanted to set parameters about acceptable practices. Um, we wanted athletes to have the ability to focus on beach if they chose. And we also wanted to make sure that athletes and parents have the time to investigate playing opportunities with other clubs during their own time. You know, obviously, competition season is something different, but after we feel that you have fulfilled your commitment to that club, we wanted to make sure that that you had a chance to to find out, to look for another program that may be best suited for you. So, and we wanted players, obviously, to have a choice. And we are an athlete centric association. It's something that's been a part of our mission and our vision for a long time. And we want to like, make sure that our athletes are finding the best fit. We need to, they need to have a bit of freedom to find the best opportunities and choose the best program. And, you know, there are tons of athletes out there that are very lucky and find their fit and, you know, are able to stay with a program for the, throughout their their volleyball playing career, but some aren't. So we just wanted to make sure that that opportunity was there if they needed it. So here's an overview of our our policy as it looks currently. So there are a number of periods within this policy to allow some flexibility and also to allow clubs for planning purposes, really. So that's another point, like creating a policy that really balanced player needs and club needs was important to us. And that's why this policy is, does shift around a bit because we do want to make sure that we are servicing both aspects of youth competitions here. So this year, July first to July thirty first, so whole month, clubs will have the opportunity to resign athletes that played with them previous season. And we have also the second year for our summer offer period. So that'll be August fifth to the seventh. And then we ask clubs to send their resigned athletes list to the OVA office for posting. And then we also ask clubs to use our website as kind of like a message board or a little hub for their teams so they can advertise what they're looking for, positions they're looking for, number of spots that they're looking for. So that's all listed on on our website as well. And then February tenth is actually when the 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 trial window starts. So, and offers for after you attend tryouts are staggered again this year. And they are sent one day after the other, starting on the nineteenth and working all the way through to the twenty third. The twenty third, we have grouped our ECI kids all together. So that's if you are wishing to play four V four six V six rally ball or traditional lawn specialized, any offers within those age divisions will be sent all at once. So those are the major aspects of our policy. So important dates, things like that. So this slide does have a link to different things on the website. So if you have questions, go back to the deck and then you can can look there. So what is the resigning period? So the resigning period is an optional tool for clubs to use where they can resign athletes that are, were with their club for the previous season. Not all clubs use this opportunity for various reasons. It could be philosophical. It could be they don't have the administration. You know, it is really up to the clubs to choose whether or not they they use it. It is still in there because we do feel like it is a very good tool for clubs to prepare for the season. And it also allows those kids that are really happy with their program, if their club uses it, obviously, to be able to have the ability to resign with their with their team and and kind of not take that pressure off September. But it's, uh, over the last few years, we find that the more people, more clubs get used to the resigning period and the option to resign, they use it. You know, it just helps get your ducks in a row a little earlier. So you can identify, you know, for the the spikers. Seventeen U team is missing this many athletes. This is what we're, our goal is moving to tryouts. This is what we need to to fill our roster. If you do have, receive a resigning offer from your club, you're under no obligation to accept the offer. It's it's completely up to you. There is a forty eight hour expiry date on those offers. So if you're sent one within, you know, on Tuesday, then by Thursday, you would have to respond to the offer. We would ask you to respond and you could let it expire, but it would help coaches in their planning process to know sooner rather than later. Players can receive an offer at any time during the month, but like I said, the offer is only valid for forty eight hours. If you accept a resigning offer, your trial process is done. You're committed to play for that club for the upcoming season. So that is, that is a hundred percent commitment. You shouldn't be attending any additional trials come September. This is your choice. This is your your chance to to commit to your club and you're good to go. If a resigned offer is reneged on after you sign it, so if you's like, oh, maybe I I made this decision too quickly. This, you can, you may be able to get out of it, but you need to note that the athlete transfer policy kicks in. So the athlete transfer policy is located on our website under the policy section. And you would have to go for the request release process. So this means that clubs do have a choice on whether to release you or not. So releasing you just simply means you were free to go join another club. Now, that's why we're really serious. That's why there is a two day the offer expiry on this simply because you really still need to think about it. If it's right for you, we don't want you to rush into it. Make sure that you have an open convers, you know, have a conversation with your coach. Have a conversation with your club before signing with it, having, making sure you're asking questions. These types of conversations can be tricky to have, but they're important to have and they're absolutely allowed. I always say that this time of the year has to be approached with complete transparency on both sides. The athlete side and the club side. Just to allow clear lines of communication and to avoid any conflict that can arise from uh, clubs not following through with an author or athletes choosing not to go to that club after they've committed. So if a club reneges on an offer, they, that's, so if you sign back an offer to that club, that club is committed to 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 playing you as well. So that means that if they pull back on it, they can be in trouble as well. So it's it's a commitment from them to you and it's a commitment from you to them. So it it really is important that everybody is under the same, knows what's happening. Again, and if you have resigned, you're not permitted to attend any tryouts from any other club. If your club wants you to attend tryouts with their club for whatever reason, if you want to maybe try for the A team when your offer only states the B team, that can be permitted as long as both coaches know about it. But yeah, again, just keeping those lines of communication open and just knowing where you stand, where your club is, is really important. So, um, this is what, this is last year's early resigning offer form. This was ninety nine percent chance what this year's is going to look like. But the dates will be changed. Things to look for on this offer form are things to especially know, note that there are some required information and there's some not required information. If there's information on this forum that is not required and you, that your club doesn't have it, that's okay. It is, there's a reason why it's it's not required, but again, you guys need to have a clear understanding of what you're actually committed to. So there is a, um, let me see if I touched, okay. Yeah, so this could also be a general commitment to the club. So that could be why that a team name or an age category is not stated. There is an other conditions field on this form. I encourage everybody to use it. And if it hasn't been filled out, you can request the club to fill it out. So you know that this is a general offer too. So again, everybody's on the same page. So, yeah, just use that. It doesn't, if it's bigger than what that field is, as long as you have a written documentation of what you're committed to, super important. Verbal agreements of any kind can't be enforced. Whether that's a commitment to play, a commitment to play for the A team, a commitment to pay for a su- a certain age division. Those cannot be policed if it's verbal. If you have it all written down in your other conditions field, and it could even be a little blur. But just make sure that there's something there. If you feel like you're committed to a specific team, specific age division, it needs to be written on this form or there's no recourse for you if they're unable, if a club is unable to fulfill their their commitments. So super important. And like I've, I said earlier, always have an open and honest conversation with your club and coaches. Yes, they're hard, but they're imperative to you understanding where you stand and for the club understanding what you want from it. That's the only way to get through this and and kind of, you know, make sure that everybody's doing okay. So there you go. And these should always be emailed out. They can be hand handwritten, things like that. You can return them electronically through a scan, things like that, but it's really helpful to have them always electronics timestamp and and things on it. So you can track when your offer expires. Things like that. Okay, that is the early resigning period. Mark, do we want to talk about any questions here or we, should we keep going?
Uh, we can keep going.
Sorry, I was talking a bit. So what's the summary resigning period? So July first to July thirty first. That's only open to resigning athletes from your previous season. Also, I don't think I mentioned this before, but in order to be considered a resigned eligible for resigning, you have to be registered with your club in our MRS for the previous season. So you can't be considered in training or you can't have gone through a weird transfer where you weren't officially on the roster. You actually have to been signed with your club uh, for the last season. And so we introduced a summer offer period because we've been through the creation of these various policies. We always kind of, we always deal with committees and get feedback and there was a need for athletes that actually do research other clubs in the summer and do choose to play indoor year round. You don't have to. We encourage you to play beach, got to say that, but for those athletes who do not choose to to play beach, you know, indoors your your game. So they train all year round and they do investigate different opportunities with different clubs. It's permitted. After May thirty first, every athlete is considered, finish their commitment to their club. So they are free to kind of look or look at what's out there. So they are free to kind of look or look at what's out there. So summer offer period is for athletes who are actively training with a new club. And that could be attending camps, clinics, anything along that line. And they've chosen to commit to the, this new club's program. So to be eligible to sign with a club during this period, athletes must have participated in regular summer training opportunities prior to August fourth. Regular summer training opportunities. This just doesn't mean a one clinic. You know, this is for athletes that are actually, you know, pursuing it. Have had multiple opportunities, are getting to know the programs, getting to know the coach. Have really done their homework and, and decided that this is the club that they want to go to. This offer is only valid for twenty-four hours as the athlete should have sent confirmation of their willingness to commit to their club prior to the offer being sent. I'm not sure if anybody was around for the, I'll use Alicia as my example again. Alicia's played for the spikers last year and this summer she's been training with the bumpers. And she, you know, goes every Thursday for the month of July to these clinics. And after she's finished, she emails her coach and says, hey, Coach Mark, I really want to play for you guys in the summer. I'd be open to receiving an offer during the summer offer period. So this, that is only then they can send you an offer. So Mark, Coach Mark sends Alicia an offer. Alicia shouldn't have time to think about it. She's spent time with a club. She already knows this is what she wants to do. Boom, twenty-four hours, signs back the offer. Now Alicia knows she's playing with the bumpers come, come the new season. It's also important to note that not all clubs use the summer offer period as well. This policy is very flexible for the clubs to kind of try to meet their needs and get their organizational, meet different organizational capacities. Some clubs don't run any offer, any summer programs, so they don't need it. Some only do a few or different opportunities with privately or things along that line. So that's always there for the clubs to use if they need it. We did put this in because we did want to avoid any type of high-pressure situations. So just to avoid that, I hate to hounding of an athlete or to make them, hey, Alicia, are you coming? Are you coming? We really want you to play. You know, we really want to avoid that. And summer should be focusing on developing for Alicia. It should be her getting to know the program and, you know, kind of seeing what she wants. It shouldn't have to be with Mark hounding her every two days if she's gonna go play with them. Again, and summer offers are commitments to play for the club for the upcoming season, just like a resigning offer. So that means you can't attend, attend tryouts come September tenth. Means you're done. It means your weight's off, you, you know where you're going and you can start practicing with your club and team. If you sign a summer offer, resign a, if you commit to a team during the summer signing period and, and you choose, oh, maybe I made the wrong decision, you have to go through the transfer policy again. So that is super important to know. Every time you sign a form, that's an official commitment. So make sure you, you do your homework when you're training with clubs in the summer and understand if that's really a program you want to be a part of. And again, it's a commitment on both ends. It's a commitment for the club to make sure they're playing you and for you to be playing with the club. So really important to know. This is what a summer offer form looks like. Again, specified the information on the form, not all is mandatory. So make sure that you know what you're signing. It could be a general commitment to play for the club. And again, that means the club can put you wherever they see fit. If they could have five teams in the sixteen U age category. You, if it doesn't say which team name, then you could be fit where. A coach could put you wherever they feel you fit. So if you feel like you need that saying that I'm going to play for the orange team and not the blue team, then you need to make sure that that says that. If a coach isn't willing to put that in the other conditions box, then maybe a discussion is needed. But make sure that if there's something on the form that you want said, that it's written on there. If it's not on the form, it should be in the form of an email specifically saying, this is what you're committed to. Again, conversations are super hard to have, but five minutes of the awkwardness is probably gonna save you a couple months of mess if, if you can. Verbal agreements cannot be enforced, just a reminder. So make sure that you're aware of that. You know, it's, people have been let down on both sides of those verbal agreements. Clubs have been let down by athletes and athletes have been let down by clubs. So just be very aware of that. And again, twenty-four hours to respond to this offer as you should have expressed your intent to wanting to play for a club prior to this offer being sent to you. Okay. Mark, do we want to touch on any summer offers?
Yes, there are a couple specific to that, so we can ask those questions. If a club does not have any summer programs running, but a player wants to play for them and expresses their interest, can they be eligible for the summer signing offer?
No, they need to attend an actual session for them to be available for that. Like it has to be actual club-run event.
I might as well ask this next one too. If one of the resigning conditions is that a coach is in place and there ends up not being a coach, what are the club obligations to inform the players of this? Are they permitted to attend other club, other club tryouts?
Well, they, if that is specifically stated on the form, then I would like to think that the club would have an open conversation with all the athletes that have committed to that team and explain. If they can't deliver on what's on the offer, then obviously the, it specifically says on the form as well. These agreement may be voided if there are any changes to the terms or their failure to meet the terms. So that just means that if all of a sudden the coach isn't there, if they're unable to offer a certain age division, they can't hold you to their offer. So they're not able to commit to you what they promised. That doesn't mean they can't come and say, you know what, Alicia, Mark bailed on us, you know, Jacob's gonna set in. How do you feel about that? So that is always a possibility and, you know, Alicia thinks Jacob's a great coach. So why not stick around? You still got your core group of athletes. So you can still stick with the program if there is a bit of deviation. But if there are any changes to the terms or failure to meet them, the agreement can be voided.
Next, this question actually came in just before the presentation started, but we might as well answer it here. If we have two teams for one age group, players played for one of those teams last year, but would like to switch to the other team, do we still go through the same signing process?
You can absolutely resign the same athlete. You can let them know that this, like, it depends on the club and what they choose to do. Obviously, I'm just offering a suggestion here or an example or scenario. The most important thing is for the club and the athlete to be transparent of what the actual situation is with the club. So that could be you going saying, hey, Alicia, we have a good core coming back. We're not sure where you fit, but we'd like you to commit the club and we will place you wherever you, we feel you're suit developmentally, where you, you fit developmentally. That's why they can be left blank and it can be just a general commitment to, for the club to play for a certain age division. Or it could be that, yeah, Alicia, you're rock star, you know, you're stud. We want you on the, the A-team and it could say that you're the A-team. But beware as well, the club may only end up having one team. So it, it's very important to have those conversations to see where you stand with the club and what the club is able to offer you. So transparent on both sides. I hope I answered that. If I'm not, guys, Alicia, Mark, Jacob, jump in, please.
Next question. I can quickly answer this one, just relating to fair play. And as you guys are probably well aware, at fourteen, U or TNS, fair play is in effect. And then how does this change for U fifteen? For U fifteen, all tiers, we have fair play for round robin only. And then playoffs, anyone can play. And even up to sixteen U, at the trillium tier, we have fair play as well for round robin. And, and that's again, as Carrie's mentioning, being just open and transparent with the coach and setting those expectations early. And, and yeah, I know, I know a lot of those are tough to have those conversations early on. And realistically, a lot of coaches wouldn't even know necessarily how the playing time would break down that early on in the season. But again, if you're, if you're wondering, it's always better safe than sorry. Just have that open conversation and kind of, yeah, make sure you, you're the athlete and the coach is on the same page.
That, now, Mark, I'm just gonna jump in here with a general PSA, maybe not have so much to do with the tryout window. When you're looking for a club for your athlete, these are really important questions to ask about playing time, things along that line. What, not so much is my kid gonna play, it's whether or not they have a policy on it. Or if, what's the coach, team's philosophy on this? Or what's the, the team's philosophy on that? So that, these philosophies are guiding principles, you know. One coach may say every athlete earns their playing time. Or, you know, if we miss a practice, you know, there might be, they might not see the, the second or third set or something along that lines. So it's a, you know, a part of the education process when you're trying to find a club for your athlete. So starting off a tryout saying, when's my kid gonna play, obviously isn't a great, great thing to do. But approaching it as, hey, coach, do you have a philosophy on playing time? Might be a better, better way to kind of understand the coach's expectations and, you know, understand what a player's expectations could be as well.
Well said. One more question. Are there any age category limits for the summer slash early offers like TNS and up or fifteen U and up? Any restrictions?
No, summer offers open to everybody.
And one more came here just now. If a player who played last season wishes to continue playing, they must attend, oh, sorry, this is just to clarify, if a player who played last season wishes to continue playing, they must attend one practice and express interest and only then they can have an early offer starting July first?
Uh, no, early offers are for athletes that have participated, registered in MRS for the club for the last season, for the previous season, or they attended a grassroots program for the other, for the younger age kids. So this isn't one training session, oh, and then I'm, I'm a spiker. This is for somebody who was actually listed in a roster in MRS, then you're eligible for resigning. Or they're listed on a roster for a grassroots program, a house league program with that club.
To clarify, Carrie, that's club initiative. The athletes do not actually have to express interest to their clubs if they don't want to. Saying that they want to stay with the club, but they can.
They can, absolutely. But yeah, it's not athlete-initiated, the early signing period. It is something the, the club would, would do.
Yeah, so just to reiterate then, so for the summer signing period, it's after an athlete has trained or practiced with a new club and expresses interest to that new club. At that point, that's when the new club can send an offer to that athlete, just for the summer signing period.
Yeah, summer signing, and again, it, it needs to be regular training sessions. You know, that could be a house league program that's run over the summer, summer camp, clinics, things along that lines.
That is all the questions we have for now. So Carrie, you can keep on rolling.
Oh, and just before, I just, that statement that I read about if there are any changes in the terms of this agreement, that is also on the early resigning form as well. All right, tryout time. All right, I'm sure everybody knows this, but regardless of any policies or practices that are in place, tryouts suck. They're hard, they're stressful, but they're a part of sport. And are worth it in the end, really. Great growing opportunities and, you know, sometimes hard lessons to learn, but important lessons nonetheless. And again, making sure that you're always transparent with your athletes' interests when attending tryouts and you're truthful. These tryouts are really imperative to a club's ability to organize. If they have eighty athletes coming out to a tryout who are super interested in playing for their club, they need to worry about accommodating those athletes. But if fifty of those eighty athletes are just there because their friend is there, it makes it a lot harder for a club to plan. So just always make sure that, you know, if there's a conversation that happens at a tryout, that you're, you're being very honest, you know, you could say, you know, Johnny is here in support or, you know, we just want to get extra touches. We're just curious about the program right now. We're not really sure what we want, things along that lines. So tryouts are integral to a club's ability to plan and run programs. Failure to commit to a program and leading clubs along has negative consequences for everybody. Teams fold, athlete may lose all offers, you know. So there are some smaller clubs and teams out there that have a very small roster. And if they lose a committed player, that can have detrimental consequences for the rest of the team. So then all of a sudden you have seven athletes out there that don't have home, who thought they did. So that's another reason for everybody to be transparent. Budgeting's also kind of done starting at this time. So if they're kind of banking on X number with a fee of this and all of a sudden somebody who reneges on an offer or verbally agreed is no, you know, it has a trickle-down effect. So just again, go in there knowing you're trying to find the best program for your athlete and have conversations that, you know, really let people know where you stand. Conversations with clubs and coaches about where an athlete fits within a program are okay. It's not a, a time where secrets have to be kept and backdoor conversations. You know, if a coach comes up to you and, you know, you guys are, so how does Alicia like it? You know, has she attended another tryout? I know it's, it's hard to say yes, but really you kind of have to. I really feel that the more everybody is able to, to kind of be upfront, the less miscommunication, the less issues, the less complaints, the less release requests that are submitted. So, and I should mention that a release request does come with a fee. So we want to make sure that they're, when you're committed to a, a, a club, you're committed to them and that if you're serious about leaving, you're serious about leaving. There is a hundred and fifty dollar release request fee that's associated with you, with an athlete wanting a transfer after the assigned commitment has been made. So if you have resigned with your club or accepted a summer offer, you're not permitted to attend any tryouts for another club in September. So this is a violation on the athlete's behalf. So clubs can violate the trial policy whether they're not honoring your agreements or they reneg on offers. Athletes can be found in violation as well. And offers, so I, this is a tricky part, I know. A lot of times kids enter a tryout and they want to know right away. But in order for a tryout window to work, we have to make sure that athletes have enough time to see, attend different tryouts if they feel it's needed, if they feel it's needed. So that is why we have held off offers starting September nineteenth, starting with our older kids and then working the way back. You should not be receiving an offer prior to the time that's on, on this chart over here. So September nineteenth for eighteen U, September seventeen, twenty for seventeen U, twenty, September twenty-first for sixteen U, twenty-second for fifteen U. 20, September 21st for 16U, 22nd for 15U, and then the ECIs at uh, September 23. Um, and again, with uh, anything that's on a tryout offer form. As in the resigning offer, as in the summer offer, if it's not on the form, it can't be enforced. So, make sure you know that. Okay, um, what else did I want to talk about um, in regards to the tryout? Oh my God, it just left me. Oh my goodness. I think that, if I think about it, maybe we can answer some questions and it pops in my head, um, we can, we can discuss it.
One thing I wanted to mention, Carrie, quickly, was just about um, all athletes. We had it on the club presentation, but it's not in this one. In terms of athletes registering in the membership registration system as a tryout player, so if you want to maybe just touch on that quickly?
Yes, absolutely. Okay, I just need to write down my thought before it, it leaves me.
In the meantime, uh, we don't have any more questions, but I just wanted to stress one uh. One more thing in terms of the athlete transfer policy. Um, and the key part to that transfer policy is that it's not like guaranteed that you get to transfer. It's a two-part uh, phase where the club has to agree. To release the athlete and they can fully say, no, we're not going to release the athlete because nothing has been breached according to this contract. And then you are, like you are playing for that club, like it's basically you quit volleyball for the year or you play for that club, so I just want to stress. It's a very, it's not like it's just, oh, 150 bucks, yep, I'm gone kind of thing. It is a, it can get pretty messy, some of these uh, transfer policies, so. Yeah, just make sure you really know uh, what you get into when you are signing.
Right, so Alicia, you wanted me to touch on making sure you're registered as a tryout athlete prior to attending these, these um, things. So um, membership runs, um, September 1st to August 31st. Any athlete that's been resigned or uh, has played volleyball last season, you're covered by insurance up until September 1st, so. Um, we don't have to worry about having, um, you register for anything, you're still good, you're still a member, you're still valid, so that's great to go. But come September 1st, if you want to attend tryouts, you need to register on MRS as a tryout player. It's a zero fee. Um, it's just to make sure that you know, um, all our waivers are signed off on. And that includes everything that you need to know for Rowan's Law, that's your COVID waivers, um, your release liability. All that kind of stuff needs to sign off before you set foot in that gym September 10th. Just because September, or sorry, August 31st, your insurance is out. You're no longer a member and you have to re, re-register. Um, once you make your team, then um, you will have the um. Made a competitive member through club, club fees or administration, however your club chooses to do it, so um. You're, when you attend a tryout, you, alls you have to do is flash a receipt. Saying that you are registered as a tryout member and you should be good to go, but that needs to be done um. Prior to your attending a tryout, um, on, on or after the time.
Sorry, Carrie, is it just a case, if you said it or not, it is a zero dollar fee, um, it's going through the process to sign up on all of waivers and Rowan's Law, Rowan's Law compliance?
Yeah, um, and it is, I, I am gonna, this is what I remembered I was gonna say, um, once you've committed to a team or a team has a core group, whether that's done. At the early resigning time, you know, a team is lucky enough to get 10 returning athletes back. Um, they can start practicing as a team whenever they're able to. Um, so it's uh, team activities are permitted once you've committed to a club. Uh, resigned an offer, summer tryout, or summer tryout form, or, oh my gosh, not summer try, summer offer period. Um, so then team um, activities can start, whether you want to start team building or just. Get to know you sessions and all that kind of stuff is, is permitted, so that's what I forgot that I wanted to mention before. Um, okay, I guess a formal questioning period.
Yeah, we have a couple more that are coming in. Uh, how long are the trial offers valid for?
Forty-eight hours.
And the only difference, because uh, with the 24 hour, that's only related to the summer?
Yes, and that's again, because the athlete should have sent the want to commit prior to them receiving the offer.
If a player receives an early offer, can we ask who else has received an early offer and or accepted? Team composition can be uh, a deciding factor. Uh, similarly, if a player expressed interest in a new club, what questions can be asked of the new coach or your potential team composition?
Um, yeah, you can have those conversations um, with your, your club. We know that's super important. Um, like I said, um. Open conversations are awkward, hard, maybe you might not get the answers you want, or you might, you know. Um, but it's really important to have those conversations. So again, um, where you get in trouble is those verbal commitments and those verbal promises that we ask everybody to avoid. Um, but it, not that we, you know, you're able to see where you stand within a club, but. We want to make sure that you're aware that they can't be policed, we can't enforce them.
Yeah, but I think examples as well that you can ask the new club, does everything from, you know, how many athletes are you accepting on this, on this team? Um, what's your playing policy and protocols or philosophy? Um, how many tournaments will this team be participating in the year? Will the teams be playing up? Um, just to kind of get a, a general understanding of the seasonal plan for that team as well. Um, this is, you know, I think we have some actual documents online, Carrie, correct me if I'm wrong, of the OVA website that outlines questions that. Parents can ask and athletes can ask when uh, exploring options.
Um, yeah, so there's uh, communication tools that are on, on like, onsite for clubs that are really good to use. I think that LP put together, they might be a bit dated considering that we're moving on to LTAD 3.0 come September. Um, but um, they're still really important questions to have, you know. Um, with these clubs, so everybody's kind of walking in on the same page. You're expected to attend three tryout, uh, three practices a week, like that's mandatory, you know, that's important to know. Your times and your, your um. Uh, and locations are also really important to know because they can be very limiting, you know. Um, whether you're, you know, have to drive a couple hours to a venue, you know. It'll, it can make a decision on whether or not you can commit to that club or not.
Next question, I can quickly touch on this, uh, it's just relating to the number of. Uh, planned OVA terms this year, because obviously it was very tough from a financial standpoint, budgeting on the clubs and uh, for sure the last year with. Just really never knowing how many turns we're actually gonna run. Uh, but I can say that our plan is to run the same number of tournaments that we ran in the 2019 to 2020 season. So that means all age groups up until 17U, we will be having four regular season tournaments. And the 18U age group would be having five regular season tournaments just because they can't play up, so. We want to make sure we have that one additional one in there for them. And just like the 1920 season, we would be running our Grand Prix's once again as well, so. It's uh, yeah, going back, hopefully, fingers crossed, we can do everything that we're planning on doing. Uh, but yeah, that's uh, uh, what we're going off of. Um, and just question about MRS, um. Could you clarify, uh, is it, so September 1st, is that the first time they can register as a tryout player? Or can they register, let's say, in the summer?
Nope, that's correct, for the seasonal, uh, the registration rolls over, so September 1st, that's when all of the data is reset. Uh, and the membership levels go back to non-member status, so as of September 1st, all of the athletes can go in and register as their tryout players. Clubs can go in um, and reactivate their club profiles, get their coaching staff in there, coaches. Club staff can go in as well and register, um, like Jen mentioned earlier in the club presentation. If clubs pay for the membership fees of their um, team staff, coaches, managers and so forth. Coaches can just go into the system, make sure they sign off on the waivers, Rowan's Law's compliance. And then clubs, when they're creating their teams, add the coaching staff and then they can upgrade the membership to the full member role at that point. Um, you know, key to remember is when practices are going on and tryouts, team staff should be full. Um, registered members of the OVA to be covered by insurance and all that stuff, so. Um, if you have any specific questions about the registration system, you can email info@OntarioVolleyball.org. And Sherry Bennett, our membership services coordinator, can help you through um, the process.
Thank you, Alicia. Uh, last question I have here. How strictly does OVA enforce roster availability submissions in August?
Um, we do our best to track down everything that we can when it's due, um. So everything that gets posted is uh, is what we have available. We do send out reminders for everybody to um. Send in their, their information, um. So um, yeah, we do our best to make sure that we touch base with every club that they've got their stuff in.
That is all I have on my end, Carrie.
Wonderful, um, again, thanks everybody. I know this is a really, really tough time for um, athletes, parents, coaches, everybody. Um, really, um, but again, can't stress enough, just being open with your athletes' intentions. Open, clubs being open with parents with spots that are available, all that kind of stuff. It just helps the process go by a, a lot smoother. Um, if you have any questions, feel free to email myself or any one of the YC team, um, we'll be able to, to help you out. Um, I wish everybody luck within, with this uh, process and um, you know. Let's hope we have a 2022, 2023 regular season, free of any interruptions.